Evening El Segundo, we are calling to order the regularly scheduled council meeting as well as a special meeting of the El Segundo City Council. It's Tuesday, March 17th, 6:00 PM. We're going to have the invocation led by, I think, Madam Clerk, and then Mayor Pro Tem will lead the pledge of allegiance. If you could all please rise.
We gather today here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us.
We're the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nichol?
Here.
Councilmember Pimental?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Perstuck?
Here.
Mayor Boiles?
Here. All right, now is the time and place for public communications. We did receive public communications via email. Madam Clerk?
All right, number one. Hello, please enter my comments into the record and read out loud if time allows. I strongly encourage the city council to enact a public ordinance to encourage social distancing. All restaurants should be restricted to takeaway or delivery only. Also, residents should be encouraged to stay six feet from each other in public places, parks, the beach. Now is the time to engage in such measures. Social distancing will substantially contribute to flattening the curb, which will ensure that, as severe cases of COVID-19 increase, the healthcare system capacity is not overwhelmed. We're all in this together as a community. Thank you, Kimberly Kelly. Number two. Where are the plans and precautions being taken to ensure that the individuals that are being housed at Dockweiler remain at the location and do not leave the designated area? Michelle Wilson. And our last one. To whom it may concern, all the gyms and fitness studios have to be close to the public. Please take care of this matter as soon as possible. Thank you, best regards, Christine Choi. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. City Manager, you want to follow up on any of those public comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think they were self-explanatory.
Thank you. And we have addressed items, public comments, one and three, and Dockweiler RV Park. We're in communication with LA County on a regular basis. All right, procedural motions. Consideration of motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero. Consent calendar. Any polls this evening?
There was an email that went out earlier because I have a conflict at number five, so I can't. I can vote all but that, right?
So the record will just note that you'll, that Councilmember Nichol will abstain on that item?
Perfect.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, and four?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Okay, item five, waive second reading and adopt an ordinance amending 540 East Imperial Avenue specific plan in a Second Amendment to Development Agreement number DA 16-01 to allow developer G.R. Horton, CA 2, Inc. to pay a fee of 5.3 million to the city for affordable housing purposes in lieu of the affordable housing requirement applicant is G.R. Horton, CA 2, Incorporated. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero. All right, thank you, public hearing, item six. And I have something to read there. This is the time and place here too fixed for public hearing. We're going to continue the public hearing regarding introduction of revised ordinance number 1614 for zone text amendment creating a one-year pilot program to allow and regulate short-term rentals in the city's residential zoning districts through a short-term rental permit process to the regular city council meeting of April 21st, 2020. So short-term rentals will be coming back April 21st, 2020. Item, do we need to do anything with that? That's it, right, Mark? We're good on that? Okay, thanks. Item seven, staff presentations. Receive and file fiscal year 2019-20 strategic work plan update for first quarter of fiscal year 2019-20. Scott, who will lead this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, given the, the staff report is self-evident, but given our work on the coronavirus situation, at this point, we would be prepared to answer questions. I can tell you, this is the annual, your strategic plan, your, excuse me, your, hang on a second. This is the fiscal year 1920 strategic work plan first quarter update for the first quarter of this fiscal year. And we come before the council with an update every quarter. To make this relatively quick, of the 63 work plan items, 54 are pretty much on schedule, are going to be done during this year. That's 84%. There's eight of them, eight items which 13% will likely have a lot of progress this year, but go into next year, and one will take a little bit longer. Staffs available if you have questions about any of the items in here? We have staff from several, several departments.
I know we have a lot to cover tonight. Does anyone have a question, or should we get clarification on that later?
I'm good.
Good? All right. Thank you for that. And I think it's, we're going to move on to the special meeting. We have a staff presentation, item one, Scott, receive and file verbal report regarding COVID-19 pandemic update from staff, city manager, fire chief, emergency services coordinator, and others.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as Fire Chief Chris Donovan walks up, I'll just let you know that we've been at this now for a couple of weeks, if not, not longer, and we had one update earlier in the month. So I'm going to turn it over to our fire chief. He will give you an overview of where we are, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mayor Boiles, members of council, community, thank you for this opportunity. These are definitely unprecedented times around the world as the coronavirus pandemic continues to unfold. However, locally, we have remained prepared and operationally positioned to respond to this emerging, emerging threat with professionalism and dedicated workforce. Additionally, the support of this city council through the adoption of the emergency operations plan this fall, as well as ongoing cooperation of our actions is very much appreciated. We, as a city, will continue to execute on the policies implemented by this body. I'd like to start with some updated information for the community and for this council. The coronavirus continues to spread throughout the United States with the following statistics as of 2:00 PM today. There are now 196,770 cases worldwide. There are 5,875 cases in the United States. That's an increase of 1,212 cases overnight. There's also now reported 100 deaths. That's an increase of 32 cases overnight. There are 472 cases of the coronavirus in California. That is an increase of 80 cases in the state, and we now have 11 deaths reported. That's an increase of six deaths. Locally here in Los Angeles County, there are 144 cases reported. That's an increase of 50 new cases, and there's been one death that has been unchanged for a week or more. There are no reported cases locally in our community. To that end, our police and fire departments continue to remain fully staffed and operationally ready. We respond to emergency calls on a daily basis, and our city hall staff continues to provide services to the community. I want to talk about the measured response that we've taken in response to coronavirus and the actions that have followed these responses. Starting, quite frankly, several weeks ago to a month ago, we began tracking and following the coronavirus. On a weekly basis, updates were provided to council and critical city staff. Last Tuesday, we implemented a COVID-19 task force and began daily conference calls as well as supportive actions in, in tracking and trending the spread. The task force developed a three-level response locally here in El Segundo. First, we asked each department to identify essential services as defined by their critical core services. We asked for each department to identify vital services, those services that maintain public safety to the general public, and those services that sustain the economic base during the COVID-19 pandemic. Then triggers were identified that would change our posture through, in the city. Those three levels included level one, where we identified or looked for regional cases. At a level one response, the business-as-usual approach was taken at city hall. We would have reduced public access to city hall, and we had reduced access to our city facilities, but we continued to provide services as, as noted. A level-two response would be if COVID-19 cases were in clusters in neighboring jurisdictions. At that case, we would implement our incident management team. We would implement department-level staffing and scheduling changes, and we would provide those services that cannot go without disruption for more than two weeks. And a level-three response is if cases were identified locally. We would continue the incident management team with an increased focus in staffing levels. We would fully activate the city emergency operations plan, and we would continue those key city functions that could not be disrupted for more than 12 hours. I can report to you today, we have gone to a level-two in our city. Tomorrow, the incident management team will be assembled, and effective tomorrow morning at 07:00, we will begin our incident management team operational periods every day of the week. In addition to our internal reviews and our internal actions, we've been closely monitoring the state of California and the county of Los Angeles, specifically the public health department. And following state and county guidelines, we've taken the following actions. Yesterday, city manager Mitnick declared a proclamation of local emergency as well as an administrative order to address the COVID-19. In that administrative order, several actions were taken. We asked that all bars, breweries, wine lounges, cigar lounges, and nightclubs in the city of El Segundo that do not serve food be closed to the public. We asked that any bar, brewery, wine lounge, cigar lounge, or nightclub in the city of El Segundo that serves food may remain open only for purposes of continuing to prepare and offer food to customers via delivery services to be picked up. Dining and food services is prohibited. We asked that all restaurants and retail food facilities in the city of El Segundo shall be prohibited from serving food for consumption on premise. Restaurants and retail food facilities may continue to operate for purposes of preparing and offering food to customers via delivery service. That would be picked up for drive-through as well. For those establishments offering food pickup options, proprietors were asked to establish social distancing practices for those patrons in the queue for pickup. And the order also exempted a few facilities. Cafeterias, commissioners, nursing homes, and similar facilities were exempt. Dining and food establishments with critical infrastructure intended for serving the specific employees of that, of that infrastructure, including defense and industrial base businesses, transportation sector, and chemical sector were exempt. Grocery stores, pharmacies, and food banks. This order will be in effect through March 31st of this year. In addition to the administrative order, the city, in collaboration with the Cadman Group Management Company, is taking progressive action in requesting residents to improve community mitigation efforts at Park Vista. A direction will be provided to every resident to limit or restrict all nonessential guest visitation, to restrict social gathering and practice social distancing, as well as, we will be coordinating extra cleaning and disinfecting of the common area. Addition to that, we have established a shopping assistance program. If you are practicing home isolation and you do not have family friends to provide you with essential supplies, there is a shopping assistance program available through the city's outreach office in partnership with the Rotary Club. I will, this information will be on the website and is on the website. Residents can call 310-524-2705, 310-524-2705, or they can email outreachhelp@elsegundo.org. This assistance will allow for volunteers in the community to do shopping for residents that can't otherwise do that. We will then deliver the products, foods, and services to the residents needing the assistance. Finally, in following the state and county public health guidelines, we've been working, and in support of our local economy, we've been working in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and the local merchants, specifically those downtown merchants, and we've implemented the Gundo-to-go program. This is encouraging residents, workers of our city, to buy food from local merchants. The food-to-go program will allow orders to be picked up curbside. Our vendors, our merchants are working with our public works department, our police department, and information on this can be found at @Gundo on the Facebook or Instagram pages. There are many other internal actions that have been taken. I can tell you that the city of El Segundo continues to adapt our practice and stands operationally ready to respond to the calls for service. We continue to provide essential city services in response to the COVID-19, and we are ready to continue our efforts in making sure that our community is provided exceptional service. I would like to ask Randy Collins, our emergency manager, to come up and add some more information related to our incident management team to provide any more information for some. He was busy today on several conference calls, and then we'll be available, the both of us will be here to answer any questions you may have. We also have Police Chief Wellen available to answer questions, and we look forward to continuing this conversation.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, appreciate your, the opportunity to be with you today. Chief talked about the incident management team, and I usually start off my presentations by saying it's a great day for disaster preparedness. Well, today is the reason why we've done disaster preparedness, and I want to take the opportunity to thank all of you for your leadership. You know, since I got here in, in 2017, it's been a significant investment in disaster preparedness. You've really made it a priority for the city in hiring me and giving me the budget that I need to prepare the city. And I can tell you without hesitation or equivocation that this incident management team that will be stood up tomorrow is ready. Over the past three years, we've been able to bring in some of the best training, and that training has been attended by all of our responders and our disaster service workers. And we've had various iterations of that training, both team training and individual training, and had our tabletop exercises, and we've solidified our emergency operation plan. So tomorrow, when the team assembles, we'll be working on a dedicated battle rhythm so that we can make sure that we address this particular problem with a business in mind, with management by objectives. And as, as the fluidity of this particular incident comes up and the uncertainty of this incident, where it's fairly unprecedented and something that none of us have experienced before, I am very confident in this incident management team to adjust as necessary to the dynamics of the particular incident and serve the city well. So that's all I have about the incident management team pending your questions.
I touched on this a bit when we went over this last time, but I think that there's a couple threads that people watching at home may not have the same sense that we do about what role that public health administrators in, in situations like this where there's a contagious disease, how they, they have dictates that do carry the force of law and how that plays in. So I'm hoping maybe you or Chief Donovan can weigh in a little bit to explain to people about how county public health can make dictates that affect our daily life, and while we try to bring things in city governance that align with those dictates to make sure that the face of governance looks like the face of governance that they're used to seeing. But similarly, I think it's worth touching on a bit of how the roles of, and this isn't something that we need to go through this evening, but the roles of each one of us tie into this in terms of how you administer things. We are, by the nature of being elected officials, touching on other elected bodies in our various committee roles that we sit in and regional governance, and us trying to make sure that we are funneling the right amount of information to the people doing the work, which is your incident command teams, without getting in the way of that work is something that happens all the time. And it's just the, sort of the nature of the beast, what my father used to refer to as the hat kernels. So while you're running around in a helmet, there's guys who sit around in hats who, who make work for you. We don't want to do that, but at the same time, we want to be able to add value to your process. So I think that it's worth, as a takeaway from this, telling us individually what you need from us and what you see our role is in these things. But similarly, if you could take a moment to elaborate for the people watching at home about the role that the county public health, and when they see the governor make a statement, what does that translate to in sort of the grand org chart and chain of command down to the way that they live their lives, if you've got just a moment for that?
Absolutely. I can tell you, again, this is a very unique situation, one that has been unprecedented, and one that a lot of us are, are kind of brushing away some cobwebs and finding out some, some new laws that we, we've forgotten about and that sort of thing. In terms of the health officer in the In terms of the health officer in the public health office with with Los Angeles County, we fall under their jurisdiction in health matters because we don't have our own health department. So anybody within the county that doesn't have their own health department, which is pretty much all the county with the exception of Pasadena and Long Beach. So so we fall under their their health jurisdiction. So as their health jurisdiction, anything that is public health related, they have jurisdiction over, and they have very stringent powers that allow them to make edicts, and this is where we're seeing some of the some of the orders that are coming down from the health department. Similarly, things that don't fall within that purview, but because of the challenges that we're seeing because of of the health crisis, whether it be absenteeism or the need to understand how to help businesses recover from being shut down, how to help the city stay in business with school being canceled and people having to take care of their children and that sort of thing, that's where, those aren't public health issues, but those are local issues that that we here in El Segundo have to address, and then that's where the council comes in. So with regards to that, as we look at the particular situations that we have in El Segundo, the role of the city council is very policy in nature, and I think we're going to find that a little bit more as we start talking about the proclamation here in a little bit, and we'll see that those policy issues and concerns that are that come up, and then as funneled through the city manager to make and enforce those types of orders similar to what we've already implemented with the administrative orders that happened yesterday. So the role of the council largely is policy in nature and and really providing the support that we need from policies based on the challenges that we see. And and so we really appreciate the support that you get, and as as the incident management team funneled up through the city manager identifies various challenges that are not within our authority to make, we present those challenges and and decisions to the council for for direction. And so that would be the role of the council. Does that answer your questions, sir?
It does, thank you.
Let me get a little bit more detailed and specific as it relates to the public health. L.A. County, the county of Los Angeles declared an emergency and made the county public health officer, in essence, the incident commander. That person has incredible power, and they can make public health determinations that we must follow. And that that is why we are monitoring and following very closely information and decisions that are made by public health. For instance, we've talked about Dockweiler Beach. They have the ability to identify locations, in essence, clear locations, put RVs on site for the use of isolation of patients that may not have other places to go. We follow those orders. There are other orders that have come out, such as demands to shut down public facilities within Los Angeles County. And so that is an important distinction, and we follow closely what's going on, both from the California perspective and the governor, but more specifically locally with the public health officials.
Thank you. I, you know, I teed that up a bit because I think that it's important for people to understand that there are things, there are actions we may take that not necessarily because we woke up one day and decided that we want all the yellow flowers cut down, but the public health official can dictate that you cut down the yellow flowers if the yellow flower ties into something. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Appreciate it.
So we're going to lead by example here. I'm going to decon our area here a little bit. If we have other people that come up to the mic, we'll ask for them to do the same. There's Perle hand wash, there is Perle wipes, and we will practice community mitigation efforts. Social distancing is going to be important. We're going to continue to work hard in this community to keep people safe. Oops, sorry. My apologies.
Thank you, Chief. Is that it for item one, then?
Yeah, yes, as far as, I would like to just add a couple things. We're, it's interesting, we're sitting here, and we're giving you the update, and we're finally getting a moment to take a breather, and many of us have been working twelve, fourteen, sixteen hours a day. And just to reiterate for the city council and for those in the audience and those watching at at home, you have three hundred plus human beings dedicated to the safety and well-being in this community, and I'm really proud of the public safety professionals and how hard they're working. They are, as well as the public works employees who are also out there, but they're the first responders, they're out there, they get a call, they have to go, and they don't know what type of exposure the person they're they're dealing with may have. So we appreciate their willingness and their commitment to public safety, and I believe on both departments, definitely the police department, everybody's off of vacation time, and they're here. So a lot, a lot of effort, and as the fire chief mentioned, we're fully adhering to the emergency operations plan that that was made reference to earlier. So it's like a textbook case that way, how it's working and implementing council direction. And we have been keeping the councils, the governing board, in the loop. You're probably getting too many emails and texts and phone calls from myself and other staff, but you know what we know, and I'm really proud of our effort to get the word out to the public. I'm hearing from, I've been here nine months, and I'm hearing from colleagues in other cities about how impressed they are with our communication efforts. We were sending out the Nixle text messages and all that to thousands, eighteen thousand people or eighteen thousand accounts. So we feel we're doing everything we can to keep the community informed in terms of what's happening, and you see it out in the community. We don't have hysteria or anything like that. We do have a lot of people going to the grocery stores, but that but that's happening everywhere. So thank you for the opportunity to bring you up to speed and the community up to speed. We encourage the residents, council members, everybody in this room, keep going to the city's website. I do want to stress that I know at times the community and council members feel a little frustrated that you want to know the latest information, and why is it not on our website? Why is it not on social media? We have a legal, ethical obligation to make sure everything we put on there is accurate, and we would like to have the latest information. Sometimes it takes us a little while to confirm, like the whole thing with the Dockweiler Beach. We were hearing all kinds of rumors, there was the Fox News story and all of that, but we didn't have any confirmation. And these gentlemen were working hard with L.A. County, Fire L.A. County Public Health to get that information, but the moment we got it, it went onto our website and went out to the community. So we're working very hard on your behalf. If you have any other questions, we're here. Thank you.
Just, I want to concur. I did receive a text from a friend who was on the Hill saying she's heard more from El Segundo than any other city, so we've actually kept her informed. So thank you very much to all the efforts. I know it's a team effort, and everyone's been doing a great, a great job.
Item two, adopt the resolution confirming the existence of a local emergency based on the COVID-19 pandemic and ratifying the city manager's administrative proclamation of emergency dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and administrative order number one. Want to read that, Mark, or?
Yes, I'm sorry. Where is my title? My apologies, one second. The resolution of the El Segundo City Council confirming the existence of a local emergency and ratifying the city manager's administrative proclamation of emergency dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty, and administrative order number one is ready for adoption.
Who would like to make a motion?
Can I ask a question briefly? Do we, how do we terminate the emergency? I mean, I know obviously it can, it can, it can die on the vine at sixty days, but if we determine that it's lifted, do we have to wait till a regularly scheduled meeting? Do we have a special meeting, or is there a, or by proclamation can the city manager terminate it in the same manner that he can by dictate that it that it comes into effect?
It will ultimately, again, it could expire in sixty days. City manager could issue a statement that the emergency is over. Again, the council, though, would need to ratify, it's being done by resolution. So ultimately, virtually everything the city manager does, it just gives him authority to have some flexibility to to address the emergency, but then things will come back to the council for ratification, and the same would be true for the cessation of the emergency. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so if the incident is still going, it's quite possible it could go for two, three months, and then prior to sixty days, we'd have to come back to council, get authorization to extend it. Not that long ago, we only could go twenty-one days, now we can go sixty. I also like to just point out for council and members who are watching, people at home who are watching, having, this is a fairly significant thing. Cities can go decades without having a proclamation like this. Many council members can go their entire career never having to do this. One of the advantages to the community is now that we have the proclamation, if there is to be federal and state reimbursement for our expenses and cost to the taxpayers, we're eligible for reimbursement. So it's always very important to do that. We will be tracking our time, and it does put us in a better position to be fully complying with the national and state orders that come our way. So to answer the question, it'll terminate on its own within sixty days. If we need to do it sooner, we will do so sooner, and if we need to come to council to formalize that, we'll do it. Thank you.
Good, all right. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Item three, discussion and potential direction to prepare short-term and long-term financial analysis and city budget impact of COVID-19 pandemic and report back to city council by March thirty first, twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I put this in there in response to questions and feedback that council members were providing to me the last several days. Yes, this is a, as the fire chief said, a profound shift as we're going to the new normal to deal with this. The city of El Segundo has a longstanding love-hate relationship with LAX, and I'm saying that to illustrate the point that as that airport is impacted, as air traffic decreases, and the need to stay in local hotels decreases, as the impact to our business community, fewer people staying in the hotels, we lose revenue from our major revenue source, the general fund. As the council knows, the transient occupancy tax or bed tax is the largest source of revenue to the general fund. It is what is largely, it's a significant funder of the public safety professionals serving the community right now. And occupancy over the last several years at the hotels has been phenomenal, very healthy. Now we're hearing it's dropping. I don't want to throw any numbers out there, but we've heard it, in some cases, it may be dropping. Joe, are you below fifty percent for some hotels?
We're still working.
Yeah. So we are likely to be impacted to a significant extent. Again, I don't want to throw a number out. This will likely be a short to moderate term impact. Another source of revenue that we'll we'll see an impact is on sales tax. The price of gasoline is dropping, the restaurant closures, the bar closures, the stuff like that, we will have a decrease in sales tax revenue. So we would ask that you allow us to have a couple weeks to do some assessments, to take a look at what's going on, and we can come back, or we can provide you a written report, whatever works, and we can summarize the the short-term impacts on the revenue side, and we can also talk to you about impacts on in terms of operations. I'd like to also share with you that we do know with this pandemic, there will be an end based on past ones, and it could be a few months. We will get through this, we will get to the other side, we'll have better days, but there will, there's definitely going to be an impact. I'm very grateful that the council's been supportive of having reserves. This is a good example, this is not a local or regional emergency, this is statewide throughout the whole country. So the ability for us to be bailed out by the federal government and the state government, it's, there's a lot of uncertainty, we are, we may have to rely solely on our own resources. So having the near twenty percent reserves in the general fund is a blessing. We also will tighten our belt as need be and look at a variety of measures to get us through this, and we'll have more clarity for you by March thirty first. And that's pretty much it. I don't have a bunch of numbers, we can speculate and guess. I also don't want to be alarmist and create a fear for our employees at this point, but we will get through this. Staff's available if you have questions or comments.
All right, thank you for that. Do we need to instruct you to, are we actually advising you, directing you to do that?
Direct us to do the analysis and report back to you by March thirty first. We're happy to, it'll be two weeks from today, we're happy to do a special council meeting. You don't have, your next meeting is April fourteenth, but we're happy to do an emergency, or not emergency, a special meeting by the thirty first, or do it in written format, whatever works.
Okay, I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Thank you. That concludes the special meeting portion of the evening. We are at, staff, let's see, report, city clerk.
None this evening.
Okay, city treasurer, I don't see any representatives. Council member Pimentel.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Council member Nichol.
I just want to encourage everyone in El Segundo to please try to support your local businesses. It's hard enough to make it in a small town as a restaurant and bar, and now being takeout only, it's, there are some extreme impacts that are going to be felt here, so anything you can do, please do. And, you know, you've, you've heard the report from our, our team tonight, social spacing, please do it. If you could see what I'm looking at right now with the social distancing placards that are on all the chairs in this room, you'd understand, like, the sooner we, we all abide, the sooner we can be past this and go on with our lives. So I just encourage that, you know, heed the advice. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Marcia Hansen specifically for really rallying the restaurants together and developing a Gundo-to-go plan, and we were able to turn that around in twenty-four hours, signs are already up. Really trying to encourage our restaurants, our residents to support the restaurants, restaurants with the delivery and pickup options. So thank you to the chamber for really, you know, pulling everybody together, and we had Drew, Mayor Boils and I attended a meeting, it was just yesterday, with all the restaurants or majority of the restaurants to come up the plan, and they had some really good feedback and insight, and we're kind of worked to help them. And I also want to do a shout out to all the residents. You know, we do have ESPN, our famous ESPN, and there's a lot of people on there offering help and trying to support people, and I just really want to keep, continue to encourage that. It does make a difference, and this is why we live here in El Segundo, it's a great place to live.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'll be quick, although it seems so insignificant in the scheme of things, we had an incredible state of the city last week. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the chamber, Barbara Voss, Christina, Kristen, everyone that put so much time and effort, Darnell, Robert, everybody in ESTV. We had over five hundred people, I think by far the biggest turnout ticket sales ever, so thank you to everybody for that. As Mayor Protam mentioned, we did have a good meeting with the restaurants, and one thing I want to point out is we had all, we had a lot of the downtown restaurants represented, twelve to fifteen, and even before L.A. County came out with their edict of restricting restaurants, that was even further than what Gavin Newsom had suggested with the fifty percent reduction in occupancy, even before that, almost all those restaurants said we should and will shut down for dining. So they have our best interests in mind as a community, we thank them for their support. And as a small business owner myself, I can tell you, there can be, there can be difficult times ahead. There's some good news out there. The SBA is working with LEEDC and others, I think the, I think it's SBA disaster loans, if you Google that, you'll find it, and the SBA has already released some funding for small businesses for working capital, which they will desperately need. I want to thank Rotary for coming forward with elsagundorotary.org. They're taking advantage of their website, they're putting a link on there for all these incredible volunteers, there's been an absolute outpouring of support from the community, people pinging us on every different channel, saying we want to help, how do we do it? Rotary took the lead and has got a forum going, and that'll be, you know, helping seniors with delivering food, et cetera, and Chief alluded to that earlier. Also, as Chief mentioned, an email outreachhelp@elsagundo.org. If you need help with food delivery, can't get out of your home, don't want to get out of your home, please email that, it's outreachhelp@elsagundo.org. And I just want to conclude by saying, please stay informed, stay alert, and stay safe. And our personal pledge, or at least mine up here, and I'm sure my colleagues will the same, is that we will work really hard to balance getting you the absolute latest information that is accurate, and there's a lot of moving parts, and so we're doing our best to digest and disseminate as quickly as possible. That's all I have. And city attorney?
Nothing today, thank you.
City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to wrap up, I would like to start by focusing on, the mayor talked about the state of the city, and that was right on the eve of all of this, but the presentation of this, but the presentation was stellar, it was really upbeat and positive, there's so many great things going on in this community, and that's our driving force as your municipal workforce. We know this is a great community, we know once we get over the hump with this virus situation, we're going to go right back to that greatness and the foundations there, and we'll build on it. So that's what's motivating all this. I'd like to thank the City Council for your leadership and your patience as we go through this. We do need to acknowledge our residents and let them know we're, like I said before, we're doing everything we can for them, but we appreciate their support and understanding. We had to shut down services that they consume every day in our parks and our libraries and recreational facilities, and we know that's not easy. They pay taxes for that, but they're very understanding, we're getting very little negative feedback, we're getting a lot of understanding. And for those who are watching, if you feel otherwise, just call us, send us an email, and we'll try to answer your questions and help you get through that situation. I want to acknowledge and thank our employees, in particular, our union leadership, they've been stellar. The unions of this city have stepped up and said basically they'll do what needs to be done to help the community get through all this, so I want to publicly acknowledge them and thank them. The next City Council meeting scheduled, as I mentioned, is April 14th, and at that meeting, you'll certify the election results for the council members, for the clerk, for the treasurer, and Measure T. If we do have a meeting prior to that on the 31st, that'll be a special meeting with getting back to the follow-up on the impact of the situation that we're in. That's it, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council.
I just have one thought, you know, I know we closed the public libraries. Is there, since we're doing pickup for food, is there a way we could institute a pickup at the library? I know with all these kids being out of school, you know, being at home with their parents, and you know...
Pick up my children at the library?
You know, having new books, their access to books might be a great opportunity, maybe we could, if we could do something online where they reach out or call, we could self, you know, automatically register the books out to them and put the books in a location for a pickup. That way, kids, our students and our children will have access to learning and books.
We'll look into that, get an answer from the council within 24 hours.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Protam. Any public communications that have come in, Madam Clerk? Anyone in the audience? Okay, okay. All right. That is it. We are adjourning both the open session and the special meeting.
Record closing, look at 6:48.